Good evening, this is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's July 11th. Do we have one more that were coming in maybe? So let's, let's begin the meeting with the Fledge of Allegiance. Okay, yes, we do have a full house, so Norman, Jimmy will be alternates just in terms of voting tonight. Approval of the agenda.
Second, so you have one, two, three, four, five, six. So one, two, three, four.
Sherman, that's right. Thank you for that correction. So no Sherman, so you would be a voting member. Still on the bench. Okay, approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Okay, the people coming in out of the door are the police department members or?
It was town clerk.
Okay, okay, so I don't see any public comment here. Moving down to the item in new business. We've got on the East Pittsford Road. We've got a situation where there may be something happening with access to East Pittsford Road that's not allowed.
Access is what?
May not be allowed. I mean, hi. We just went by the public comment period.
I'm just gonna listen, okay?
Okay, so the parcel map that you all have. The parcel in question is, is what, 32045 or 40, 46?
It's the one right at the corner, it's the only undeveloped one there. I'm not sure of parcel number, I'm not sure what lot number it is.
And what would be the name?
It's a coup.
Okay, so that would be 32046?
Yep.
So the question is that they have built an impromptu, but they've spent a lot of money on impromptu drive already to East Pittsford Road. And they're, you know, they front Colonial Drive.
This is going out the backside?
So it's, it's, well.
They currently do not have an egress on the Pittsburgh, East Pittsburgh roadside, is that correct?
Right.
Do you know?
Egress.
Well, I thought it already existed.
No. It was, it was put in very impromptu and very quickly.
At this point in time, it is there and they have access, but it may be impermissible.
I hope we not get into a lawyer thing here. I hope we not get into a lawyer thing.
No, I'm just trying to, no, I'm just trying to clarify that something exists now, is that correct?
Yes, but I don't, there was no driveway permit.
Yes, that's, okay, like that's.
Okay, issued.
There is a driveway permit issue, yes, there is.
There is, what does it say, Bill?
That it's temporary.
Okay, temporary until?
November 1st.
Okay, and then their driveway will be to Colonial Drive?
Correct, right. Yeah, that would open, it'll come out and their access will be Colonial Drive.
So Act 250 is looking into this?
Yes.
For what reasons?
They are gonna take over for us.
Can you explain a little bit?
That's what she told, she'd be in touch with the, she'd be in touch with the property owner directly. And I didn't get any more information on that, so.
So did you, did you get in touch with Act 250?
Yes.
Okay, and what did you ask them?
That he would like to have his driveway off of East Pittsford Road and that it's not one of the ones listed in the Act 250 permit as permissible and that he may be coming to them for a modification and he did and then he changed his mind.
He changed his mind, but he didn't change his actions.
He changed his mind on the permanent driveway. But she was gonna follow up on the temporary one. So we have said we're okay with temporary one, if Act 250 is okay with temporary one.
Howard, you got, you have your hand up.
Yeah, this certainly shows that our driveway permit policy is not working and it's basically broken. As some, the policy should be set up so that this doesn't happen and that the other parties get involved to make sure that there's not something, you know, a problem along the way. Could, it could be a septic system adjacent to it that could be a problem or whatever. But, but I think for the highway commissioner, whoever it is that just grants these permits, I think they're being just too free with them and that's something that that permit ought to have some rules that go along with it because this, this shouldn't have happened. You know, I don't care if it's a temporary road or not, it shouldn't have just been, been able to put that thing there, it's in a bad location along the highway. And I just think it's, it's a mistake. So I'd say, I'm just thinking that we should have a policy that says to get a, to get a highway access permit, you gotta, you know, do certain things. That's all I'm trying to say. Like, this was a surprise to us, I mean, had we known about it, we could have looked into it a little bit from the planning commission.
Exactly, exactly, and is there any doubt in your mind that this parcel belongs to the Colonial State subdivision?
It absolutely does.
It does, that wasn't a question, yeah, no, we know it does. So I, I mean, I understand Howard's point. But there is the listing, the property listing did say there are restrictions and covenants on the property. The, the new owner said he wasn't aware of any. So being that you know, so yes, we could have brought it to you, but we're, we're, we're in that process, so Dave issues, we've issued driveway permits, you know, right along from Byron through, through Dave. Where, and, and Tower's point, like, we don't, there are, there is no ordinance or policy that, that directs anything in enforcement for the driveway. We, we, we were talking about that, about we have, we have excavation permit and we have, we have an issue in a neighborhood that we have to address that there's excavation going on that was not permitted, but there's no enforcement, there's no penalty. So what, so, I mean, I'm all, I'm all for it, but where, where do we? So if we had brought this driveway permit to the planning commission, what's the process, there's no history for that, there's no precedent for doing that for a driveway permit.
Right.
He's, it's a single lot, there was no, there was, there was a subdivision, there was no anything other than he bought a parcel and he wants to build on it, that doesn't come.
And when did you first hear about it? And from whom?
From the new owner who wanted, who said I need to put a driveway in.
And that set in motion Dave?
Yeah.
Doing a highway permit?
Yeah.
You know, I don't wanna open an argument, but my recollection is that we had a fire case with respect to a driveway. And it woke me up to the importance because what happened is the fire chief came in.
You talked B-Lo driveway?
I'm sorry?
On, on Quarterline Road.
I don't remember where it was.
I know, I know exactly the one you mean.
Okay, and no, he, he stressed the need for some governance of these things because of the importance to the fire department to have a driveway that is manageable and friendly to the fire department. So if this is just a temporary one, do we have a driveway ordinance?
The, the town does, the highway commissioner oversees it.
But it doesn't deal with temporary permits, is that right?
Not, not really, no, it's, I think it's either streets and sidewalk, I think it's streets and sidewalk ordinance that it's under, but.
So maybe, maybe we need to look at it.
There's other ones that, I mean, there's been several other driveway permits that I wouldn't have thought to bring them here. Does it fall under the purview of approval or denial?
Well, I mean, this one seems like a really glaring example of a huge subdivision that was created to deal with housing all, all along those streets in there. And this kinda, you know, disrupts that orderly development of that subdivision and it's like putting traffic on East Pittsford Road unnecessarily. Where they already have access to town streets.
His concern was the angle of the driveway on the top wasn't, wasn't ideal.
It's a pretty steep angle now.
But the just, so just a clarifying question. There is an existing driveway off of Colonial Drive, is that correct?
No.
No. Right.
Okay.
But there was no reason not to apply for one for, for that. That would have been a no brainer.
His preference was, was East Pittsford Road, not Colonial Drive, but.
I'm, yeah.
And, and we now, you know, but, you know, this, I, I didn't, I didn't have any information, so you know, it was, it was brought to us and within a very short period of time it was addressed, so.
And as you can see from, you know, the, the map, there's, there's a lot of properties and if more than, you know, some others decide to do the same thing and go on to East Pittsford Road, it becomes a little more dangerous situation there. That is not your usual town street.
There are some of these that are but Colonial Drive that do go East Pittsford Road, isn't there?
There are four that were specifically granted access to East Pittsford Road.
Where are those, Bill?
I, I don't know.
They're just there to the south of it, I believe.
Yeah, they, they're, yes, and there, there were lot numbers identified in the Act 250 permit as these lot numbers specific.
So that's part of the Act 250, gotcha.
I couldn't find a subdivision, there's no subdivision, I couldn't find a subdivision permit in the files that related to this, all there was, was the Act 250 permit, so I didn't, I didn't find anything from our, our own records for this, it was just the state records.
This goes back to 75, you think?
Oh, it was, yeah.
So I have another question. How many other lots in that area are undeveloped?
Not many.
Yeah, yeah, not many.
That's been, that's been built.
I wouldn't have expected any, but it's almost been totally built out, it's, it's, there's very few.
This is 32046? Is that correct?
Yes.
Barbara, thanks.
Yeah, that's the
La Canto?
Yeah, La Canto. Yes, Donna.
I'm sorry, I mean, you know, I live right up there, the lot next to it, 32047 is also undeveloped.
Thanks, thank you.
But yeah, this driveway just kinda sprang up and it's in a very dangerous spot.
Yeah.
Kinda curves and it's steep.
Yeah, and, and, and the, the traffic tends to go quite fast downhill from um, Howard, any other thoughts?
No, it sounds like it's gonna be taken care of, it's not gonna become a permanent driveway, it's gonna just be a temporary, but it's just something that every now and then this happens to us, we, we see where a driveway has popped up and then we try to figure out how and why and, and whatever, it's just as far as this one goes, I guess it's what Bill has said. It's, it's gonna be done sometime in November and, and that'll be the end of it. I don't know, I don't know what it'll look like, Barb, you, you live nearby there, but you'll, you'll get to look at it and see it, but.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, they're taking, they're, they're taking a lot of trees down just to put this temporary drive in. They're also clearing the lot. For logging that too. So it, it just.
It's a very steep lot, very steep and that's, that's why it hasn't really sold, I mean, it's not a popular lot at all, so.
Yeah. So Howard, what did your office do in this situation where someone promises this is only temporary? And we're gonna, there's gonna be another driveway, how did you stay on top of the, those situations?
You're talking to Bill?
You are, Bill, we'll start with you, Howard.
That would be Bill, because I, I would, I have not been involved with any authority on driveway access, but that's a, that's a bill.
We have, we, since I've, since I've been here, I can only recall one. And that was, I think, this spring and it was there for logging and it was there for like two weeks and then it was gone. But Dave took, they said they're coming in to fill out the application. We're, it's gonna be, we're gonna give it to them, say, go in and then it'll be gone and it wa, and he said, yep, it's gone and, and we're good, so.
And there's gonna be a residence.
No, this was, this was for, for harvesting timber.
Okay, but, but the, this current situation.
For residents, yes.
And is it the same Dave?
Dave Sears, yeah.
Oh, Dave Sears, okay, I thought you meant Dave Fusco. Is he one of the property owners?
Bill, does the town have any, if a temporary permit was issued?
We don't have a temporary permit. We have conditions on the permit that it be temporary. We do not have a permit that is for temporary.
Okay, so then my question would still be, if the person who has what I call the temporary permit and which you reworded, which fine, and that person leaves the driveway there and just doesn't remove it, does the town have any? Any enforcement capability to come back and say?
We have not come across that situation.
But wouldn't the enforcement be Act 250? I mean.
In, in this case, the enforcement will be through Act 250, not through us, like.
So, yeah, 250 would be the only, okay.
And they're, you know, how likely they're gonna win something with Act 250, I mean, you know what I mean?
Unlike, well, when, his communication with me was that it was safer to have the driveway on East Pittsford Road and he was sure they'd be fine with it and then the next time I talked to him, he says, we're moving it to Colonial Drive.
So we'll see where it goes, right?
I mean, i- if, if it goes that far, we would be part of the decision making, we would have a say and a select board.
I mean, I guess it depends upon what kind of, because it'd have to be a amendment to the department. And I guess it would depend upon how substantial of amendment that becomes.
We've seen amendments before. They've come across our desk.
I, well, I, I don't know where this is gonna go, but, but Kim is well aware of what's going on, so.
Great, well, thank you for that. Is there?
So in the bigger picture, are we gonna maybe take a look at the ordinance to see if we can help it somehow or does that not make sense? I mean, is, is it just, it is what it is and we can't really help it?
What, what, what do we want to try and address?
I don't know, well, just, I guess I'm just thinking that maybe perhaps had it come across here first, that it's a more set eyes on it to see if there's a conflict with something, maybe? I don't know, rather than just relying strictly on.
We, we don't routinely or really being that this was, you know, I, I, I didn't know, I didn't really know the whole history of Colonial Drive, I mean, I know it's there, but I didn't realize it was like 95 lot subdivision in, in 75. So.
Of course, the other problem with us.
It'll trigger to say like, oh, actually, like, Act 250 could be a problem for this, that, that wasn't really a topic for either Dave or I.
But nothing's in writing, right, with the town and the landowners right now?
Or.
For them agreeing that this is only gonna be temporary, I mean, there's nothing, no one has signed anything and I'm just kinda following up on Jerry's.
That's condition of the permit, right?
It's, he, we have a driveway access permit in the office that has a condition that what is there is gone by November 1st. That's what Dave has put it as, as a condition. Whether Act 250 comes back and says, you've got seven days or whatever to get rid of the driveway, that's a different situation. So our, Dave's condition is that it's gone by November 1st. Whether that's superseded by, by the state or not is yet to be seen.
And of course, the thing is about with us getting involved with driveways, right, in conjunction with the we don't know what they look like, I mean, it'd be impossible for us to get out to these construction sites and see them, I mean, it would mean a, you know, that he's the guy that's.
Right, and we have, there are, the standards that are attached are those set by B-Trans. So we don't set our own standards, we say you are, you will install them by B-Trans standards, then as those change and evolve, so do ours.
Well, we did, there was a fire chief in the past who would come to us.
Right.
With, with questionable or, or, you know, some sites that he was concerned about.
The driveway that he's talking about, that he came to you years ago about, I know just which one it is and I know, I know just why. And I mean, we, we certainly can, but do we have the do we have the authority to tell them you can't build a driveway with a stone wall and make your driveway, you know, 7 feet wide and not accessible? I don't know.
Maybe not in that case, but in this case, I think we have an orderly development argument.
Probably.
And that maybe in lieu of talking to Dave about changing the ordinance somehow, is just to ask him to come before us.
If there's something that's obviously in conflict or something.
Right, or he has any question about. Yeah, Jim.
Changing the ordinance would apply only to cases that come up after the ordinance goes into effect. Anything that's in the works at the time the, the change or a new ordinance is drafted.
Right, right, so, so in this, in this particular area, we'd be talking about the one lot that isn't undeveloped, that.
In the future, thank you.
In the future, yeah, for change.
It would apply to any, any lots, anywhere.
In town, right.
In the future, right. You can't make it retroactive to a situation.
That's what Jim's saying, I agree.
Yeah, I agree with Jim.
Norm.
As I understand it from Bill, at present, the situation is with our driveway ordinance that it doesn't provide for a temporary ordinance, a temporary driveway. And we have no enforcement powers with regard to that. I remember not specifically, but recently, we looked at one of our ordinances and tweaked the enforcement powers and the penalties and that kind of stuff, I forget which one it was. For first violation, second violation, maybe somebody does.
That was the housing or the short-term rental.
I'm sorry?
That was short-term rental.
Yeah, no, there was something, I think something.
We did do it, we did an adjustment on the penalty, financial penalty for offenses for short-term rentals, that's the most recent one that I remember.
There was one before that, but in any of them, a- as I recall. But in any event, we're powerless at this point. We have no, as I understand it, nothing in our driveway ordinance that deals with temporary driveways. So, you know, we're at the, at the well, you know, we're just in the hands of Act 250.
Do we do, would it be effective for us to write a letter? To Act 250?
Not if, in my view, no, because we have no enforcement power and we have no, nothing in our driveway ordinance to rely on.
There's nothing about temporary, there is, the, there is a, a line about does not release, the issuance of this permit does not release the applicant from any requirement of statutes, ordinances, rules, and regulations administered by other governmental agencies.
To be Act 250.
That's the Act 250 application right there, so.
It defaults to, to Act 250. But
Yes.
But I, what I would suggest is maybe Bill could send us, if it's not too long, the existing driveway ordinance and let's just individually take a look at it and determine.
Yeah, it's on our website.
Yes, it's the streets, it's a streets and sidewalk ordinance. It's 19 pages, so.
Streets and sidewalk ordinance?
Yeah. It was recently updated because we updated language on culverts, because it used to be galvanized culverts were, were acceptable and now they're not, so that was a, kind of, we, we updated some sizes and types, but nothing, nothing major, but, but it was just done first quarter of this year.
So that would have been last July, August, September?
Well.
First quarter of the calendar year.
January. First quarter of this year.
Okay, I, I get a little confused as we're, we're talking about your municipal calendar or the or the physical calendar.
It was amended January 2nd, it was effective March 2nd.
Norm, did you have some?
My suggestion is that we put the sidewalk or the driveway ordinance on the agenda for the next meeting or the following meeting of the planning commission, we'll all take a look at it. Then I think we're probably better informed to deal with this issue. If, you know, right now, we're in the hands of Act 250 and we have no authority and, and maybe we'll decide we don't need any. But without hands-on with the ordinance, oh, you know.
I don't know, I beg to differ, I guess, if, if, you know, people can get around it with a temporary driveway and then we have little to none enforcement or power.
Suggesting that we look at that by looking, first taking a look at the ordinance and becoming familiar with it, you know, I don't think we're out of sync, I think we're on the same page.
Dana.
So first, I want to just say thank you to everybody who brought this to our attention. I think that's important, that we be aware of what's happened, so. Kudos. Second, it seems to me that what is currently in place, and I'll summarize, anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, is that, one, there is a permit that has been issued for a temporary driveway until November 1st, is that correct?
Yes.
That seems to be consistent with other permits for temporary driveways that have been requested in the past, even though in the past, the duration of those permits seem, seem to have been shorter.
Yes.
Third, we have an understanding that there is a safety issue with a driveway fronting on East Pittsford Road. That falls within the purview of Act 250, that's the fourth point. Act 250 has already been alerted and there has been a conversation between the landowner and Act 250. The landlord communicated to Bill that he was going to withdraw the request for a permanent driveway on East Pittsford Road. Have I summarized the issue sufficiently for what was brought before us this evening? And if not, what did I miss? Yep, okay, so knowing all of that, I would suggest that we continue our education and I would support Norman's idea that we review what we have for an ordinance simply to keep ourselves informed and that we let the process through Act 250 play out. play out and that we stay informed about what those decisions are. And if there is something that falls within our regulatory purview, that Bill will let us know as quickly as possible.
So we're tabling it. Which I agree with.
Do we see the ordinance? Is that what everybody's saying?
Yeah, and I don't think we have anything to 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 rule on or uh judge, and so I think we have a good idea of the the situation. Let's move forward.
Oh, there's no question, as Jim said, we can't address this. We have nothing to act on, no basis to act, even probably to write a letter. Because we have no regulation. But my thought was, we educate ourselves and uh give some thought to, well, perhaps including some language in the driveway ordinance that addresses this. You know, within the framework of the ordinance, how it deals with things, et cetera. You know, but there could be a situation where we get some run agate. And we're there with uh on a without Act two fifty covering us. We're covering the situation and we have no, you know, really no leg to stand on to regulate it. Uh, I think that's a potential that we need to give some thought to.
Just a quick follow up, Bill, what were the exemptions that were the four that were made?
Lot numbers.
Right, but what was the what was the content of those exemptions?
Talk, it talked about driveway access, it talked about driveway access needs Pittsburgh Road, and it said, it was in two different paragraphs. There was two lots in one paragraph and two lots in another paragraph, and it said, these two is like thirty five and thirty six, or like forty one, forty two, like something like that, like these, these two and these two are specifically allowed to have access to East Pittsburgh Road.
Do you remember the reasoning?
It's gotta be because of the grade. Or, I don't know, the grade is steep on all those.
Really, what, when when I was reviewing it, that really wasn't relevant, so I was looking for, I was focused on this one, not.
Do you remember the timeframe for those?
It was all is the original permit.
Seventy five.
So that's that the original permit is not in our roads and sidewalks ordinance that covers this, correct?
Original Act two fifty permit?
Excuse me, the right, the the exemptions occurred in the Act two fifty permit, correct? Which are not, I mean, they may be referenced by citation in in the um in the streets and sidewalks ordinance. I don't know.
Yeah, well, yes, because it says like us granting permission does not remove any obligation from other state regulations.
So I would add one more thing in terms of our uh judicious education, and that is that we see the original Act two fifty permit on which these exemptions were made.
I do.
Permit is pretty substantial. There's a lot of there are a lot of documents that go along with it, and there are a lot of amendments over the years.
So let me let me qualify my request then. I'm only interested in the section that deals with the exemptions where they are outlined. So I don't need one hundred and fifty pages to understand the exemption that appears on page fifty seven, paragraph B. So whatever that is, let let just, if that, if we can uh see that exemption, then we will be informed should there be future action that we need.
The the pertinent sections.
Discussion, the discussion of the four lots that
Yep.
That's the exemption you're talking about.
Okay.
The exemption that allows four lots that were developed in nineteen seventy five to have driveway access to each East Pittsburgh Road. Because it would be informative to understand what were the conditions, which is what Barbara just asked, uh that resulted in an exemption being granted to those four properties.
While we're looking at the
If we're looking at the streets and sidewalks ordinance that is governing driveways, we might as well know what is in place uh through Act two fifty that allowed those other ones to have access to um East Pittsburgh Road as opposed to Colonial Drive. I think that that would be helpful should something come before this body on which we have to make a decision.
See you, Andy. Is that, is that, just like, is that a motion?
That that's what I'm gonna ask. Why why don't we put this to bed by making a motion about what we're going to do and ask for everything, and that way it'll be in the record correctly? If you would, Dana.
Okay.
This is a role you've really like, really honed.
I've honed it. I think I think I'm constantly being asked to make motions. You do a good job and
You withdraw your comments?
Uh, yeah, I should probably do that. Um, okay, I would make a motion uh to instruct um the administrative assistant to provide the planning commission with a copy of the streets and sidewalks ordinance as well as a copy of the relevant section of the Act two fifty permit uh that was granted in nineteen seventy five when the development on Colonial Drive was established, that relates to an exemption for four properties having driveway access to Cologne, excuse me, to East Pittsburgh Road.
For the August first meeting? Want to add that?
If that is reasonable for the um town administrator, I would happily amend that motion to the August first meeting. You okay with that, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, such is my motion.
Excellent.
Second.
What are these days? I'm gonna have to swirl that table around.
All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just, I think Bill said the we can find the streets and sidewalk ordinance on the website. You've asked him to provide us a copy with it. A copy of it. I'm not sure we need that. If it's on the website, we can get it.
Well, we would if we're all sitting here reading it. We would if we're all sitting here reading it at the same time at the next meeting, wouldn't we?
Okay.
It it's a reference copy. We could, that doesn't preclude us, uh, I don't think, Norman, from doing our own research.
I understand. Sure, he's correct. Thank you.
Ready for the question?
Hope so.
All those in favor of Dana's very fine motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post?
What about folks online?
I said aye.
And I've seen.
And Howard?
I said aye, aye.
Good job. Okay. On to the next item in the agenda. It is I guess it's the uh the townwide celebration. So I thought tonight, the townwide celebration is August twenty fourth, the T W C.
It says my teeth here. Twenty fourth. And that's a Monday, so I was
Yeah, so that's that's not, yeah, that's not correct, so we'll say
That was last year. That was last year. This year is the twenty fourth.
So let me um share this for Howard and Mary Beth. Everybody see that in Zoom land? Okay, hopefully you do. So this is the last slide presentation that uh we had concerning river corridors. Um, few months ago, the Nature Conservancy and Sea Grant, Lake Champlain were here, and they did this. The at our last meeting, when we were talking about the townwide celebration, we mentioned maybe doing um having a slideshow running during the day. So if if that's what still what we are thinking about doing, I thought we'd look at this one. See what slides we want to keep and which ones may not be necessary. See if that that would be still a good idea for the townwide celebration. And then maybe, thank you, Donna, um, we may want it narrated. Which would make more sense if it was just gonna I mean, make more sense than just having slides, running through slides, unless we have different ideas. So, um let's everybody agree that we'll just go through here and there we go. So we've got this
Just ask, how is it gonna be done so that you can see it with the amount of ambient light that's gonna be out there?
Well, the if it's on a laptop, people can get close to it and maybe cut cut off some of the glare and such. You think we should project it like a
And that's just, um, you know, so that unless it's big, people aren't gonna really see it if you if it's on a laptop size, I don't think it's
Yeah.
even worth doing. Certainly, if you had a reasonable sized television, fifty, sixty inch or something, that could catch people's eye.
Okay. And maybe do a couple showings during the day?
We'll have it loop continuously.
Just loop.
You think that's doable, Bill? We have power in there.
You have power there, yeah.
We can work on a a monitor, a TV. So, yeah, this is just
Go to rent a center and rent one for a day.
I think there are options.
Okay.
So, okay, this
We can take it down from, we could use that one.
Good suggestion. Andy said he was gonna bring his down so we can use.
So we've got this flood history slide.
Yep.
Got the second flood history slide, which
What does that show, that slide?
It, I think they put um those circles um around areas that
Where the floods occurred?
Were affected by the nineteen disastrous floods. Probably adds up to nineteen there. I can double check that.
Interesting um statistic that I see that jumps out at me and I would bold it or make it somehow different is that since two thousand eleven seventeen of those floods have occurred. So in the last thirteen years, seventeen floods have occurred to create, well, actually, I don't know that. Uh unless there were multiple ones in seventy three and seventy six. But if we're talking about that, that would be a statistic that I'd really like to know, because that would be a very powerful image relating to why we need to do something about river corridors. Because climate change has affected uh the intensity of the flooding in the last thirteen years. I'm just looking at the numbers that are up there. So eleven, twelve to eighteen, so we're going twelve, thirteen, twelve, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. That's seven years. Eleven is eight years and twenty three is nine years.
After last night, you gotta add
Twenty four.
Yeah.
Anyway, my point is that if we could have more detailed information, well, that's just Rutland. Nineteen seventy three to two thousand eleven, there were nineteen disastrous floods of regional scale. One flood every two years.
Statewide and then in Rutland.
Right.
It's
So uh the having the numbers of when those occurred and the frequency, if 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 it is in fact true, my assumption that the frequency has intensified in the last twelve years, that would be, that would be worth noting. As to why this is important, if we're focusing on education, this is for everybody. It's not just for property owners who have land and we're not just trying to tell them what to do. We're trying to ensure the safety of all town residents by making sure that uh floodwaters have a way, a place to disperse so that they aren't flowing with the intensity and the power to destroy as they did in with Irene and have done since. Um, particularly up north. So.
Okay.
But anybody who's heard my opinion can can criticize it or amend it or anything else. It's just something that struck me.
That's slide number four.
Okay.
We might want some additional information on.
Yep. So you're taking notes on that, Barbara? Are you going to ask? Okay.
Yeah. So uh, you know, five, just an example of a type of of flooding inundation.
That's in the capital. That's in Montpelier.
Yeah, I, yeah, looks like
Looks like the dome in the back, okay.
And then
Root four.
Four in Irene, that's erosion.
Yep.
Barbara?
Yeah.
One thing that occurs to me is that if each of these individual slides don't have some designation of location, they, to me, they lose their impact. So if this is in Wallingford or if it's in Rutland Town, or if it's in Montpelier, seems to me the impact changes. Particularly
Maybe for the worse, they say, oh, well, that's Montpelier again, you know, that's that's not, that's not Rutland.
We don't have those problems. But at least show the ones on Rutland and don't show anything for the ones that aren't Rutland County.
Okay, so yeah, okay.
These are just examples
Of the types.
Of what can happen, and I think that that denoting where they occur only provides a point of emphasis in some place for people to actually connect with what they know. I don't think that's ever a bad thing, and I don't think people are going to dismiss it because it's not in your own backyard. And that root four, uh damage, it would be great if we could get another um picture or two, because that's that's Menden and uh bordering on Rutland Town, and so that's very close.
Yeah, we, I mean, we could even try to find a picture of last year in Killington.
That that would be great, you know.
In addition to
In addition, right.
Irene and then twenty three.
Even last year in downtown Rutland on two or three streets right in the one, right near
Church Street? Oh.
Two streets that flooded very badly and everybody. And um Michael Talbot, for some reason, I remembered this, he was Board of Alderman had a picture that the Herald ran. But that's close enough to hit home, you know. And so anyway.
Okay.
But I I think those pictures speak very loudly about what can happen if we don't take some type of corrective action.
Right. The difference between this one
Same picture, isn't it?
Same picture, it the the red
Eighty percent of Vermont flood damage is a result of erosion.
Yeah.
I mean, i- if you wanted to, you could take the first one out because it doesn't show anything. And then thi- this would show the statistic. That's small potatoes. So this is what, slide nine?
Yeah, and if anyone runs across any uh Rutland area photos, send them to me if you run into Michael Talbot or anything like that.
One of the things that I feel strongly has contributed to the erosion situation when we do get the abundance of rain is back in the sixties, seventies and eighties, early eighties. Towns could get summer permits from the state water resources to go into the streams like the White River. I personally know about that one because I was involved with them. And take gravel from the river. And we, we had to do that under. Strict management practices. And they would even measure depths as to be sure you weren't getting down too low. Which was good. And that prevented a lot of the water in the heavy times like seventy-three, for instance. From moving to the sides. There's been a ton of. Homeowners, farmers that have lost a lot of stream banks. Because in nineteen eighty-one, they passed a law in the Montpelier. Said the towns couldn't take gravel from the rivers anymore. So. You can't have it both ways. That's my message.
Were you here when they did this presentation? Did you ask that question?
Yeah. I did.
And I think the answer was, well, they had to decide one way.
Well, he hung his hat on the fact that. The federal government in these large streams has some jurisdiction now and their. Restrictions are, are, are pretty heavy in terms of allowing. Disturbing the riverbeds.
Even stream beds.
Yeah.
I think the Coal River, they could do that, too. I think the Coal River, there were permits to dig gravel out of the Coal River back in the, in the sixties and seventies.
And after Irene, they. They suspended those per, those regulations. And they went in and, and fixed the, the stream beds, riverbeds.
Statewide.
Back to where they, they needed to be to, you know, just make common sense. For bears.
Yeah, so it's, it's sort of a choice between dealing with a flood and making those problems less severe. And versus the ecological reasons for not doing that kind of stuff.
Look at the ecological, you know, look at what that's, well, look at what just happened in northern Vermont, though. You talk about killing some fish because you're dredging and you're, and you're, you're repairing those riverbeds. There's gonna be fish and other species and other living things that are gonna become a problem. How many living things just died in northern Vermont because the floods just raged through there? I mean, there's gonna be, those fish are done. I mean, it really is, fish are just part of it, but as an example. So.
Right.
You kill them all because you, you have these big floods or you go in and you manage those, those, those riverbeds? I don't know.
So, yeah, I mean, we get into managing here, so maybe we want to adjust some of these slides coming up. We probably want to keep this one seventy-four percent more downpours. Since, from nineteen fifty-eight to twenty-eleven. The topography. And again, maybe we can consolidate. That, as Dana suggested before. And this is the first in a series of slides about a river. I think this is in the Huntington area, if I remember correctly. So tha- that's, that's the latest radar of, of that area. It's called LiDAR. And this is what the development looks like. In that same area now. And.
That could easily be around here. All you have to do is pick any, any river or stream bed and see where the development is. Strapulate the, the same thing that happened.
Right, and the river corridor would be.
Brown shaded area on the either side.
With the red lines, yeah. Okay, so here's the controlling river stuff. And they put this, you know, this was an ad or what, what this was in the lower left, how dynamite streamlined streams. And then a photo of, of, you know, post-dynamiting and, and straightening that channel.
Where?
Anywhere. I'm, I'm not sure we're gonna find Rutland examples for everything here.
But I was just. I just think it'll have more credibility no matter where it is, if it's identified.
It might be in the fine print here. I can't see right now. So here is the Passamseek in the Northeast Kingdom. And some of the.
That's the same thing on the right side, Passamseek?
Yeah, where it was straightened.
Thereby creating a channel for it to accelerate and intensify in strength and speed, right?
Oh, a- actually, it says Huntington River there, so that wouldn't be the, so these are two different rivers. One that's left alone and one that's been straightened.
One that's left alone is on the left-hand side.
Yeah, Passamseek. And this is another channel straightening in slope, not sure where this is.
Right, but you, the whole point is that by showing the contrast, you've got a snaking river that is original. And then you're superimposing a straightening channel, which will actually allow the waters to pick up speed and intensify in power.
Yeah, the meandering is original and it's, and it's what rivers want to do. It would.
And if it goes over, if it goes over its banks, it's just going to spread out into that area around the bends. As opposed to flowing straight and creating erosive situations. And destruction of roads or houses or whatever. Yep.
Howard and Mary Beth, feel free to chime in anytime. Yeah, Howard?
No, I just said, it looks good. It's. It shows the real story as to what, what it's all about.
You know, the, the other thing, Howard, that I was just thinking is that if one of us or two of us or a couple, it doesn't matter. Could actually do at least once or twice during the, the looping, that we would put out that there will be a presentation. So that people want commented. Interactive. Participation in the slideshow, that there'd be an opportunity to talk to one or two of us. Who would be sitting there, anybody that feels comfortable commenting on the slides and what we've learned. So. That might be another option. One around the time that lunch begins while people are waiting in line and another one later in the day, an hour or so before the end of the day. There might be two opportunities to do education around this PowerPoint.
So still have it looping throughout the day?
Yep, but then we could slow it down or stop it and do a commented. Presentation. That way, people would have an opportunity to interact with us. They would be able to get the information from the slides. If we don't know the answers, we can at least write those down, say that we will try to respond when we get an expert from the. Because that's part of our education anyway. We can let them know that sometime in the fall or next spring, that we are going to be hosting. An informational meeting to help people become more informed. I don't know, I'm just talking off the top of my head at the moment.
Sounds, sounds good.
Which is a dangerous place to talk.
So I think there's a couple of slides, slides here about dredging. Take a little explanation. I, I, this is where I especially think maybe even, even during the looping, that a narration might be. Welcome for these slides.
There's a big difference between having the river controlled and be deeper and straight or letting meander and making it deeper.
Right.
What I mean?
Right.
I mean, if you, if you create a stray, I agree. It's just so much power, you know, and straight ahead and in a rush. But if the existing riverbeds are made deeper.
So you have to wonder, you have to wonder what some of these storms are, how they're deepening the channel naturally.
I don't know if they're deepening them as much as they're eroding and they're filling in. I mean, if you just drive over to, just driving to Woodstock. Those rivers are enormous now with, but they're, when they're running in the middle of the summer, it's deep. There's just, there's just no depth left there.
Yeah.
So they spread, they get wider and wider.
Which is a good thing.
I, I, you know.
It, it slows down the water. I mean, that's, that's the concept.
Second jury's thoughts here. I often drive because I have a friend up in Sanford now. Up Route one hundred from Killington to Bethel. And the change in the width of.
Big, big.
Is significant, and in the summertime, all you see is sand, but both the depth. And I, I think it was a result of Irene. It, you know, it's, it's beautiful when it's full and you come around these wide turns. It's as scenic as can be. But it also, I think. I think there is better control. But, you know, the width is unbelievable and, and Woodstock, too, when you go that way, it's, it's almost scary. I've had a couple of times when I wondered how much, whether I was gonna.
Well, you, you know, I'm sorry, you can also look at just simply as those, as those rafting places.
Yeah.
They're gone because there's, it's not deep enough anymore to raft in the summer. It used to be. It's not anymore. So I don't mean that that's the solution to make it deeper. I'm not saying that.
Yeah.
But Irene definitely changed that and, and, and these things seem to be ramping up more and more and more and more, so I don't know. I'm not saying I know the right answer. I'm just seeing what I see.
A side story to.
Yeah.
Natural process.
So Jerry, I was gonna ask you a question. When you were saying, make it wider and deeper, you're, you're looking at the, the first half of that slide, the top half. Where it says low banks, low, low flow depth, as opposed to the one that's underneath that has a, a very deep. Narrow channel, right?
Right, so they're saying, it, it looks to me like they're saying that if you, if you keep it low. It is, am I wrong? To me, it looks like they're saying, if you keep it low, it's lower velocity and there's more room to spread on the sides when it's wider.
Right.
But the wider it goes, the more those roads are falling into those rivers. I don't, I don't understand the logic behind. I'm not saying that, that just depth is, is solving it, and I'm sure, you know, they, obviously, these people are professionals at it, but I just. I think that if, that, that what we knew as kids here in Vermont, the rivers don't look like they were when we were kids. There were less floods when we were kids. I don't care what the statistics show. I know, I, I mean. I, you know, from the time I was, you know, three years old or whatever, we were talking about it today and the, and the thing was, do you remember any significant floods in the greater Rutland region? And granted, our mind, you know, we don't remember everything, but we were all in agreement until Irene. I don't remember any huge, significant flooding going on.
They came much less frequently, like twenty-seven and forty-eight.
I get it, but as soon as Irene came through and changed the whole topography. Even these, even these events that are, are three and four inches of rain are raising those levels of those rivers right over to the sides of the road. Like you can see it every time you go to, to, you know, over to Queche through, through, or to Woodstock. You see that that river just rises up. I don't think that river's that deep anymore. It's just not. It, it just widened, but it filled in so that it stretches right out to the edge of the road bank, or the, you know, the river is right on top of the road now. It just, I don't know. I'm not saying that, that, you know, things are changing. I, I get that, too, and I don't think there's, obviously not an easy solution, but. Anyway.
So this dredging is, shows low erosion versus high erosion. Depending on whether there's low banks or tall banks.
What this, what this picture shows me, though, is that you don't want to be building either way. On the sides because the, both pictures are relatively consistent. On the margins. It's on the left side and the right side. The difference is that on the top one, you have water that when it floods will go up. And spread out where those tree, I think those are trees, on the top slide. Whereas on the bottom one, you have the power of the river that is going to carve out those banks and cause them to cave in.
And, and cause the water table drop. See that? The water table drops.
Oh, yes, I do see that. The, the yellow bar. Yeah, I can't.
Which, which may make development less. Favorable in that area.
Because in terms of drilling for wells or whatever. You can't, you can't access the water.
And, yeah, I don't know if it affects the vegetation, the trees. I don't know. The water table is. Some unanswered questions for these slides.
It'll be helpful if we got somebody to help us interpret them. Because the last thing we need to do is provide a comment or an interpretation that's not accurate.
Okay. That's twenty, twenty-one. So we've got twenty is channel dredging. Low, high erosion.
There's a little one that popped up. It's twenty-two, the one that has the little picture down in the right-hand corner.
That's twenty-one. That's, that's twenty and twenty-one. I'm not sure. Not sure we need twenty-one.
I don't know, yeah.
But it does. Address another angle of it being due close to a highway system, but.
Yeah, I don't know that that overlay is helpful for me. What do you think, Jerry? That little insight down there on the right?
The only difference between these two is the little.
Yeah, that doesn't do anything for me.
Okay, and twenty-two, the state of our rivers.
I think we need help on interpreting that, honestly.
Yeah. If we keep it.
If we keep it, otherwise just get rid of it.
That's about the only one that makes sense to me.
Oh, this one?
This one?
Yeah.
Oh, well.
I mean, it shows, it shows kind of the, the natural progression of those houses are going away because they're falling into the river. They're not there anymore. So those old houses that were built on the side of the river when these, when the times were different. And we weren't getting these events all the time. Nat- naturally, they're kind of going away, which is terrible for the.
Oh, I see. I, I, I get it. Yeah. I, I was having trouble seeing it. You're right.
There's a lot of info there.
It kind of makes sense what they're.
Maybe I didn't show it down.
Okay.
It was attached to it all.
Um, and then.
Here's what we used to do with the.
See, that's a, that's, that was my, that's my whole point. That's what I thought. That makes sense to me. Yeah, you remove the gravel and you keep a consistent.
Well, I'll tell you, there was a lot less bank erosion.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I agree with that.
So twenty, so we got twenty-two, which Jerry's going to explain.
Yeah.
And twenty-three, which takes a section of that.
It adds.
And. At that section is sort of where we are now.
That's what, the, by percentage would. Yeah. By percentage, what stage all of our rivers are in? Is that what that means? Stage one, stage two, stage three, stage four, stage five.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I see, I see the pie chart and then the five thousand miles that were assessed. And seventy-five percent of them. How does that correspond to what's on the left-hand side?
It doesn't.
I don't think it does.
Well, it.
They outlined the pie chart in orange. Show you that, that out, that, these three stages are these three stages here.
Yes, that's right. It goes by stage.
Ah, that makes sense. All right, Bill.
So stage one is equilibrium. That's the first one on the top that's outside of the orange. And then, as Bill just said, the orange part of the pie chart includes stage three, two, three and four. Twenty, thirty-seven and eighteen. So.
And that's where they're coming up with that seventy-five percent. Gotcha.
There you go, Bill. In other words, seventy-five percent of the rivers are currently unstable.
That is a little bit, well, it's a little bit misleading that four is nineteen or twenty percent in that. That is a little bit, well, it's a little bit misleading that four is nineteen or twenty percent and that's stabilizing. At least it's going in the right direction. But then it turns around, so seventy-five percent of them are unstable. Isn't, wouldn't stabilizing be something other than unstable? But anyway.
Um, yeah, that they're taking the the most dire definition of that, I guess.
Right, exactly.
Extreme definition.
Fact.
Yeah, anything that is unstable is unstable, I guess.
And the last.
I guess, I think I like Barbara's assessment.
And so number twenty-four of twenty-four, we want to keep this, do we want to?
Where's this?
I don't know, Norm, it's anywhere Vermont.
So the question, the question is a good one.
Says Water Bay. I think, I think so, it looks like one of the state buildings at the end of the street to me. Way down there, see the brick building right at the end of the street.
Right, could be, I, during Irene.
Right.
So the question is a good one, because that's what we're trying to address in our river corridor.
Also, also.
What can we do to reduce our exposure of pollutants? Right, we can be proactive in where we build and we can allow riverbeds to follow their own course rather than trying to channel them into more powerful natural phenomenon. I, the picture doesn't necessarily do anything for me, except that it's a flood.
Do we want to change the picture to include something from the area? Or does, does this, the boats and?
The Herald that they were talking about down by like, was it the party store, those couple streets down there?
Yeah.
Right, right near Ramontos.
Below that, yeah.
Yeah, below that, I can't think of the name of the street. It's a second street, there's only, that street and there's one more.
Is it Summer Street?
They have Royce and you have.
Nope, not Royce.
Royce is up on the hill.
Further down, further.
All the way at the.
Clover, Clover.
Anyway, sure.
They're gonna take that street out.
Might as well.
And the whole street.
Clover and Hopkins are the two that.
Clover and Hopkins, yeah. So, yeah, if if you could pull something that that relates to an event that has happened here that people can identify with, that would that wouldn't be a bad idea.
Okay, um, so that's all the slides, Mary Beth or Howard? Any thoughts or did we miss any of? Any times you wanted to say something?
Yeah, the sun's.
The only other comment I'd make is that my sense of aesthetics would like the font to be the same size in the question. The top part of that question is at least two points bigger in font than the bottom one. And my wife gets mad.
You know, my mind just doesn't go there.
Human error is human error.
Well, if he's, if I spend too much time looking at the same slide, that's where my mind goes.
Anything else that we should add to this?
Is there a link for more information where they could, where people could go and do we have a card that we could hand out to them? To the resources that have been available to us?
The, something we could include is like a link to the river corridor ordinance that we haven't dealt with yet, but we've got a state model.
Well, let's give it to the state, I mean, show the state model what's, what's up.
Isn't there one of those river cor, I guess this kind of shows the river corridor. If one of those are, you know, the one thing that we had when we were talking about river corridors. There's one or two of those pages that are pretty, they kind of show you pretty well what they want to do or what they're, they they seem to be, but it's probably too much of a pain in the butt to get those.
You know what's not in here is the ERAF, the the disaster relief fund.
Yeah, right.
And, you know, would, you know, how much more money would be available to the town of Rutland?
Be a good one.
That would be a good one, yeah.
Okay.
And we could put it after the slide, too, that we would have more money available for us. You know, we could adopt the river corridors, we would get money, all of those would be things that.
So at the end, are you saying?
After the slide, so it says, this is the last slide, right?
Yeah.
So what can we do and then put in a couple of slides with the ERAF and and the river corridors.
The link.
Draft ordinance from the state.
Yeah.
Sounds good, plug it.
Okay. Again, if anyone, and this includes everyone here, anyone runs across any photos, let me know. Got some good ideas here, do we think we want this narrated?
I would do it.
Well, that's, that's the next question. The first question is, should it be narrated?
For the townwide celebration, I I don't think so, there's too much noise, it's too much, there's music, there's people, there's, it's gonna be different. You have to have it at such a high volume that it's gonna be the topic to get received.
That's, that's why I was thinking that we would have a couple of people comment and do the presentation without the narration, but have a couple of us at each opportunity to comment on it and do it interactively. Now, to that point, Barbara, if if somebody wants to put down a few talking points for each slide that we could then share or use, that might be helpful.
Okay, that's everyone's assignment. We are, we've got one, we got two meetings before the townwide celebration, but the second meeting is, you know, just a couple of days before, so. Really, the only other real work meeting we have is the next one, the first, when we're also looking at the driveway permit. So, yeah, if you would, I think most of you have copies of this now and Howard, oh, and Mary Beth, I can leave some extra copies here if you want to stop by and pick them up and look them over and make any comments.
Okay.
Does that sound like a plan?
I'll be away.
You'll be away for the townwide celebration? But you'll be here the first. Okay.
So do your homework and then you can go on vacation.
You still trying to get out of the homework or I didn't quite get the draft?
I've given everything I can give.
Okay. Any announcements? Yeah, that's a good idea. Not too much from the select board, right, Bill?
No, it was on the board last week, so.
Right, right. Okay, let's go to the minutes of June twentieth.
Move to approve the minutes of June twentieth.
Okay, is there a second?
I was absent, I was too.
Jim, were you here?
Is my motion to the minutes going to fail to get a second and we're going to have to postpone?
Norm can second these.
I'll second, I'll ever.
Thank you.
You want my motion to die? Untimely death.
Any, any discussion of the minutes of June twentieth? Going once.
At risk of being pedantic under old business number two, I think we have a reduplication of the same same word or combination. The consultant reviewed the suggestions for the park and it did not create any major concerns, there's worry see reviewed. So that second worry viewed could just be stricken, I think, and then would be a false set.
What are you referring to?
Old business.
The, the.
Point number two.
The third old business, Pocket Park.
Oh, sorry, Pocket Park. There was a reduplication of reviewed.
Okay, does the maker of the motion approve the change?
Uh, yeah, as amended, sure.
And the two, I I didn't, didn't catch which one beat the other one, Howard or Mary Beth for seconding. Do you approve that change on page one?
Yes.
The change, which is, which changes the motion.
So Mary Beth, you'll, you'll, you'll accept that friendly amendment.
Yeah, so I second that.
Thanks.
Back to us next week.
Okay, ready for the question? All those in favor of the minutes as amended? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any nays? Couple of stents, all right. Anything else?
I can motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second that one.
All right. We're adjourned, thank you.